Everyone, if we could have a rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Here.
Alderman Clark.
Here.
Alderman Mayberry.
Present.
Alderman Spargattis.
Present.
Alderman Talonair.
Present.
Alderman Parker.
Here.
Alderman Ship. Mayor Tomes.
Here. Thank you. We'll do the pledge allegiance in a moment of silence.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ship. But all over again. Item number five.
Minutes of the December 4th, 2017 meeting.
Do you approve the minutes as printed?
Second.
Moved to second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Item six, updates. So, we have STEAMazing After School Projects. STEAM, I understand, is, I think, is science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. On Wednesday, December 13th, 2017, the 3031 Library Branch will hold a free after-school project gearing towards art this time. From 3:30 to 4:30 p.m., kids and their families can become artists and enjoy some quality time this holiday season. 3031 Branch is located at 3059 30th Street in Rock Island. Stormwater Management Program. There will be an informational meeting held on Wednesday, December 13th, 2017, at the Police Community Room. This meeting will discuss steps Rock Island takes specifically to comply with the MS4 Permit, a water management program comprised of best practices. This will also give the public an opportunity to learn about the impact of stormwater discharge on local waterways and the steps we can all take to reduce the contamination of stormwater. Meeting is at 6:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 1212 Fifth Avenue in Rock Island. Science of Star Wars. Join us in the galaxy far, far away to celebrate the science of Star Wars with fun projects for all ages on Saturday, December 16th, 2017, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Downtown Library. Get ready for the next episode with experiments and activities that show how the movie predicted real-life technologies. The Downtown Library is located at 401 19th Street. Event is free and snacks will be provided. Snow routes. Can you believe, talk about snow routes. It snowed a little bit today. As we enter the winter season, please note that parking is not allowed on designated snow routes when two or more inches of snow has fallen until the snow has been removed. Snow routes are marked by street signage. Vehicles in violation of this ordinance will receive a $35 parking ticket. Vehicles that remain in violation will be towed. In the event of snow, major emphasis was placed on primary streets and hills with secondary priority given to school areas. Residential streets are cleared when the primary and secondary streets are completed. That's the end of that story. Item number seven.
Mayor Tomes will close the regular meeting and open a public hearing regarding the calendar year 2018 budget.
So, we will close the regular meeting and open it for public. Is there anybody that wishes to address the city council? I don't see anyone.
Are there any members from the editorial board of the Quad City Times here?
Seeing none. They're not speaking. All right. Well, with that being said, we'll close the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting. Item number eight.
Tax Abatement Resolutions.
Move to adopt the resolutions A through Q as recommended.
It's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor say aye. Oops, excuse me. It's rule call. I apologize. It's rule call.
Yes.
Rule call.
Sorry. Turned the page too quick.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item number nine.
Claims, A through D. A. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $18,230.37 to Dave Morrison of Rock Island, Illinois for legal services rendered for the period of October 24th, 2017, through November 20th, 2017. B. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $18,800.50 to Broadspire of Atlanta, Georgia for workers' compensation claim. C. Report from the Human Resources Department regarding payment in the amount of $5,500 to Broadspire of Atlanta, Georgia for workers' compensation claim. And D. Report from the Public Works Department regarding payment in the amount of $559,252 to General Constructors Incorporated of Bettendorf, Iowa for the Outfall 7 relocation project for services provided from November 1st, 2017 through November 30th, 2017.
Move to approve claim items A through D as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
I would like to break out Claim D from that group and only do A through C and then do D separately, please.
Okay, we need to amend that, or?
Somebody needs to second my request.
Second.
Okay. Moved to second. All those in favor? Oh, just give me a rule call. Rule call. Everything, because we're going to, everything but B.
Everything but D.
D.
Everything but D. A through C.
A through C.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Okay, we need, got a motion for D?
Motion to approve item D.
Second.
Moved to second. Is there a discussion?
Due to my new employment, I'm going to be abstaining from this vote. Sorry, guys. This is going to come up frequently.
Okay.
All right. So, you have a discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker abstain. Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 10.
Claims for the week of December 1st through December 7th in the amount of $950,824.98 and payroll for the weeks of November 20th through December 3rd in the amount of $1,462,436.90.
Move to allow the claims and the payroll.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 11.
Report from the Information Technology Department regarding the purchase of GIS software licenses from Esri of Redlands, California in the amount of $6,300.
Move to approve the purchases recommended.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Rule call.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 12.
Report from the Community and Economic Development Department regarding bids for the demolition of three residential properties, recommending the bid be awarded to Valley Construction of Rock Island, Illinois in the amount of $61,821.64.
Move to award the bid as recommended and authorize the city manager to execute the contract documents.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, if we could have the addresses of those three residents.
You got those?
I think you put it up there.
Are they up there?
He's got it up there.
No. It's in.
Probably be easier. I've got them sitting right here.
Yep.
The first address is 1339 12th Street, 409 21st Street, and 1019 13th Avenue.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion?
I will also be abstaining from this vote as well.
We can have a rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker abstain. Ship.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 13.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an ordinance for the levy, assessment, and collection of property taxes for the city of Rock Island for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018 and ending December 31st, 2018. First reading.
Move to consider the ordinances recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
No.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item 14.
Report from the Finance Department regarding a special ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, Article 8, Section 4-175 through Section 4-182, Section 4-183, and Section 4-186 as it relates to residential rental property.
Motion to suspend rules and pass the ordinance as recommended. Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 15.
Report from the Finance Department regarding an ordinance adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning January 1st, 2018 and ending December 31st, 2018. First reading.
Move to consider the ordinance as recommended.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
No.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
No.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Five ayes, two nays. Motion carried.
Item 16.
Report from the Finance Department recommending an increase in the local gas tax rate of one cent from two cents to three cents per gallon of motor fuel.
Move to.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the increase in the local gas tax as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. If we could have Stephanie come up for a moment. Thank you. Could you tell us, we're going up from one cent to two cents. Could you tell us if we went up another penny or two more pennies, how that would affect the taxes that we're talking about?
So, we're proposing, right now, we're at two pennies. So, we're proposing to go to three cents. So, it's about $120,000 per every penny.
So, how would that affect if, say, we raised it another penny or two more pennies? How would it, could it affect the actual property tax?
So, each penny is another $120,000. So, the effect, if you were to reduce the property tax levy by that same amount, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So, it would be about a 1% reduction in the property tax increase that we're referring to. And so, we've often referred to the property tax increase, what the effect is on a home valued at $100,000, just because it's a nice round number to use. And so, if we were to make the change another penny, that would reduce the impact by 50 cents. So, right now, I think we're at $4.87 per month on that $100,000 house. So, it would decrease about 50 cents per month.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 17.
Report from the Fire Department recommending an increase in fees for ambulance emergency services.
The ambulance rate increases as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 18.
Report from the Public Works Department regarding an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Article 6, Division 7, Section 2-289 as it relates to the meeting date of the Sunset Marina Boaters Advisory Committee.
Motion to approve the amendment in Code of Ordinances as recommended and refer the city attorney to an ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 19.
Report from the Public Works Department recommending an increase of 3% in the wastewater rates for 2018.
Move to approve the water or wastewater rate increase as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion?
Well, it's hard not to say something about a 3% increase on anything, but it's a federally mandated fee expense we've had for the wastewater and the wet weather treatment plant and the outfall. And it's been a big number for everyone, but we have to have cleaner water downstream. And I just hope everybody upstream of us is doing the same thing, because it's, the river is cleaner, but it, it's to a huge cost of everyone here.
Thank you. For the comments. Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 20.
Report from the Public Works Department recommending an increase in the refuse service rates of $1 per month from $10 per month to $11 per month.
Move to approve the refuse rate increase as recommended and refer to the city attorney for an ordinance.
Second.
Moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Alderman Geenan.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayberry.
Yes.
Spargattis.
Yes.
Talonair.
Yes.
Parker.
Aye.
Ship.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays. Motion carried.
Item 21.
Report from the mayor regarding an appointment to the Liquor Control Commission.
Motion to approve the appointment as recommended. Second.
Moved and seconded. And the individual's name is Blaine McCoy.
Thank you.
And any other discussion? Rule call. Oops. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we have item 22.
Other business.
Other business.
Mayor, I don't, did you want to speak, sir? I know you came in with paper in hand.
I wanted to speak to the tax increase. Was it approved or?
The first reading was. We'll have another one next week, but you can speak to if you wish.
My name is Dave Arnold. I own seven properties in Rock Island. Two of them are flips, the rest of them are rentals. And it just seems to me that people are moving to Iowa in great numbers because the state of Illinois does not have its act together. The county does not have its act together, and the city of Rock Island does not have an act together. People are not going to put up with the county, the state of Illinois increase, the county increase, and now there's a city increase. I don't know, if you're trying to keep people from moving to Iow, Rock Island, you're doing a good job. If you're trying to keep people from moving into Rock Island County, you're doing a good job. If you're trying to keep investors out of Rock Island, you're doing a great job. We can't stand these increases. I cannot sell two of my properties. I get, the most thing I get is I will not pay the taxes. I'm going to move to Iowa. And if you don't think that's fact, you need to open your ears, because people are tired of this. And I don't know what to do. You've got to cut back services or whatever, but people are not endless. They do not have a multitude of money that they can throw at the city and the county and the state every year. That's all I've got to say. I cannot buy and sell any more properties in Iowa with this, with Illinois, with this kind of tax rates going up.
Thank you. Appreciate your coming forth.
Right.
Would you mind, I don't know if there's something there to sign. We do need you to sign in, please, just so we have the spelling ever correct for the record. If not, there, there in the back podium. Oh, there you go. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I have a comment.
Yes.
Not only for Mr. Arnold, but also for other people here and people who are watching at home. This is a difficult process that we're going through. My immediate family owns three homes in Rock Island. They're not flips. They're our actual homes. And raising water and sewer rates and property taxes is probably the last thing that we want to do. However, to put it succinctly, we have to play the cards that we've been dealt. And right now, that's a difficult hand for us to play, but we're trying to do the best we can.
Well, the other, I cannot raise my rentals. I cannot raise my rent to recover these losses because I'm having a hard enough time renting properties in Rock Island. I'm just sorry. It's just, but you're not helping yourself by, you know, keep raising taxes. People do not want to pay taxes.
We understand that.
I just had to come down and express my opinion. I do not live in Rock Island, but I have several rental properties in Rock Island and a couple flips. And I have, the ones in Moline, I don't have trouble renting. I don't have trouble selling. I'm just stating the facts of life.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No. I'd like everybody to speak their opinion. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Tim doesn't have ink, so I'll give him a little.
On a positive note, on Facebook this week, a member, a newly resident of the 7th Ward, we welcomed Jay Pierce, who just purchased a home and announced it on Facebook with photos of his new home, which is in the 7th Ward, and probably, I think he's up to 90 comments about congratulations. He is proud to choose Rock Island as a place where he'd like to live. And I welcome him and I'm proud to service his alderman. Jay Pierce is the general manager of WVIK, our public radio here in the Quad Cities. Welcome him and his wife to the community.
Very nice.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I think Mr. Arnold left already, but something that was incorrect that he stated, people are not leaving Rock Island, going to Devonport. They proved it last week. The Devonport school system has lost 10% of their population. If all these people were moving to Devonport, those numbers would be up. I've talked to 47 residents concerning this tax issue. They're moving to Florida, to Texas, to Tennessee, and Arizona. Why would they just pop across that river for a tax increase? These are not poor, broke people. These are people that are retired mainly, that have plenty of money, and they're leaving Rock Island, they're leaving Moline, and they're leaving Devonport. And it was a proven fact, last week, when they did the schools, they get $6,600 per kid in school. They lost 10% of all the kids in the Devonport schools. That proves they're not going up.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, so I know tonight was not an easy night for a lot of us. A lot of increases here, a lot of things we've been talking about for many months. We knew what was, what was coming. I guess there's a couple of things I wanted to comment on and hopefully encourage some type of conversation here with the council. But for starters, I thought you did a great job, Mayor Tomes, with your interview on Channel 4, I believe it was.
Thank you.
I thought it was a very informative journalistic presentation of what was going on. The tables were broken down, the examples were broken down. And the only thing I think I took a position in disagreeing with was, during the interview, it was stated as, oh, it must have been such a surprise for you. This was a shock for you. But I suspect that during your campaign, you knew what was coming because of where the city had been trending for a couple of years in terms of building up a debt that was quickly eroding the flexibility we had with the gaming funds and with the general fund. I know you're very intelligent. I think you had a sense of what was coming. And for all of us, and for those of us who just ran this past cycle, I don't want to speak for you, but when I ran 2015, the writing on the wall was very clear to me. And I say that because I took great offense to the editorial that the Quad City Times produced. You know, I think that the local media has something of a fetish in obsessing about the negative things about Rock Island, and it's consistent. And I felt that if you wanted to see an example of what a real lack of journalism looks like, you could look at this editorial as a very surface-level opinion piece that didn't really seem to address any of the history that led us to where we're at. And I feel the irony needs to be addressed in terms of Quad City Times is owned by Lee Enterprises, a company that's sitting on $500 million worth of debt right now. I felt like if you live in a glass house, you shouldn't throw stones. If they wanted to say something constructive about this budget process, I would have loved to have seen them with us at any point over the past couple of months and seen the work and the hours that our staff, our finance director in the Finance Department, our city manager in his department, the mayor and his involvement, the many hours from us in this council. And I know we didn't have unanimous consent tonight on everything, and you all have your reasons for voting the way you do, but we did consent unanimously on a number of other items as well. And if we could have gone a different route, I know we would have. This city has managed effectively for a decade without a material property tax increase. We obviously don't go there very often. We avoided it at all costs. But when, you know, you see this massive tax hike, I mean, when we're talking about a $100,000 home here, $4.83 more per month. Yeah, it's more money. For some people, that could be very significant. Especially if you own multiple properties. But this city's got to fund itself, and we don't have anywhere to go. When we're getting robbed by the state government, when we're not getting any help really from the federal government, the money's not flowing like it used to. And, and we can look and point at the Springfield, and we can point at DC. We can be like other cities and pass fake budgets that are passed with deficits and not take care of the business that we have to take care of. But we're choosing a much more difficult route. And I would love to see this hate game that's going on, it's gone on for years, where it's like anything that would be in any other city would be covered and maybe, it would be covered in a very different way. I feel like if it's Rock Island, it's front page, it's massive. And it's disrespectful, and I think it's deeply hypocritical coming from this organization. So, you know, they, they buy ink by the barrel and paper by the truckload so they can get their message out real wide. I've got the microphone here for my ward. But I really hope we're not here next year. I really do. I don't think any one of us wants to see another increase in any of our funds. But we're building expensive things. We're building expensive infrastructure for wastewater. We're building expensive infrastructure for. we're building expensive infrastructure for, for drinkable water, um, we've got big road repairs coming, you know, and part of the deal for keeping the property tax rate relatively flat in the city for all those years, um, meant that there was a lot of projects that started building up on top of each other, so you look at the current state of our roadways, we know we've got so many miles of roadway we gotta take care of, it's a lot of money. Federal government's not gonna pay for all of it, state's not gonna pay for all of it, and, um, I, I, I suppose in all of this, I am, I am cautiously encouraged that in these last couple of meetings, we've had a total of three people come to council to raise issue